Good morning. Welcome to our commission meeting for June 11th, 2024. I'm going to call our meeting to order and recognize that we do have a quorum of all commissioners present. Before I get started, silence your phone, avoid embarrassment. And if you're going to do any public comment, please sign in in the back of the room. I think there's a sign up on the podium too, or just in the back. Okay. Ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to our routine business, look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Now moving on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is our bills we pay, our personnel actions, that type of thing. It's all available for the public if they want, would like to see it. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on our consent agenda? Anything on the agenda? Would any commissioner like to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Call the roll.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on then to our regular business. We are going to consider a motion to approve changes to the retirement recognition portion of the county's policies and procedures manual. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The first item I have is a request to approve the handbook adjustment that we talked about last year, or last week rather, for the policies and procedures manual on the retirement. So my apologies, policies and procedures, adjustment on retirement gifts. Would you like me to recap what that adjustment is?
Any questions from the commission of Carrie? All right. Any public comment on this agenda item? If not, look to the commission for action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Excuse me.
Motion a second. Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to approve updates to the information technology section of the employee handbook. Carrie Dever.
This one is the handbook adjustment that I was referring to. This involves, as you remember, adjustments mostly for artificial intelligence. We talked about this at the last commission meeting, but Monty Wannenbach is here again today if you have questions on those changes. Otherwise, we're looking for your approval.
Any questions of Carrie or Monty? Any public comment? Commission action.
I'll move. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to approve employee handbook changes on meal and mileage reimbursement rates consistent with the state of South Dakota.
This item is for discussion. What we're looking for is feedback from the commission on whether or not you'd be interested in approving an adjustment that would allow us to just mirror the state's rate for mileage and meal reimbursement. In the past, what we've done is whenever we've been notified or noticed a change, we'll come before the commission. The commission will approve the handbook adjustment so that they are consistent. The state recently have passed a bill to go ahead and follow the federal rates. What we're requesting approval is to do is to simply follow the state rates and make those adjustments without coming to the commission specifically for approval each time. If you're supportive, we'll bring back a request next week to approve that. If you'd rather hear them individually, then we'll bring back a request for a specific handbook change for the mileage adjustment that's going to be effect July 1st for the state to move it from, I think it's .51 cents mileage reimbursement to .655.
Questions of Carrie. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I'd just say I think this makes sense to go ahead and just adopt a policy where we follow essentially the federal rate, which is what the state is now following, instead of having staff have to bring it back and us adjusting it every time. I think that it's pretty standard for all employers to generally follow the federal rate, so I think it makes sense to just have that in our policy.
Other questions or comments from the commission? Leinberg?
Thank you. Thanks, Carrie, for your work on this. I'm just curious, does the federal rate translate over to the state rate? Do we all, every state, adopt the same rate, or is there a change from federal to state?
You know, I really don't know. As I understand it, the state of South Dakota will be mirroring federal rates. And for this too, I just want to clarify, we're requesting only that we follow the mileage and the meal reimbursement rates. If we were going to have a change to the hours for meals or other travel reimbursement, we would bring that to you.
Thank you.
So are we following the state or the federal rate?
Yes. So the state is going to be following the federal. And so we're asking just to follow whatever the state implements. So it's basically the same thing.
So we're following the state rate, and if they would change it, we'd just continue to follow them?
Exactly. But they'll be following the federal rate. So every October 1st, we'll go out and check, make sure there hasn't been an adjustment. If there has been an adjustment, we'll go ahead and just implement those changes.
For Kipli?
I'll move approval.
Before you do, I'm going to look for public.
I think we're just here for discussion today, right? Yes.
Okay. I read the agenda item is considering a motion to approve. Sorry.
Yes. It is.
But I will withdraw my motion until it's timely.
Okay. So public comment on this item? So it is on our agenda as a motion to approve handbook changes, but you're saying it's...
I apologize, maybe there was an error somewhere. There were approval of updates for the IT policy. This was intended to be just a briefing.
Okay.
And we're happy to have you approve it if you're able to, but in the recent past, we've been having a briefing, and then we'll come back with requests for approval the following week.
I'm going to look to our attorney. What do we do when it's on our agenda one way, but it's not the intent? Follow the agenda?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair, we could also defer to next week if we want to take action then, if my colleagues weren't expecting to take action, but...
I don't particularly care if we take action. It's just that we had adopted a policy that any changes to policy were supposed to come as a briefing first, and then following that, an opportunity to adopt the policy, just so that we all had an opportunity to understand, ask questions, and then take action. So this isn't a...
Defer would be okay.
Yeah. I will make that my motion to defer to our next regular meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kipli.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the submission of an application for the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge Capstone Grant. Morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So the purpose of me being before you today, there's, the MacArthur Foundation has approached the county to apply for what they're terming their Capstone Grant. This would be the fourth grant that we apply for through the MacArthur Foundation, so this began back in 2018. There were previous grants, but in terms of the Safety and Justice Challenge, we first started receiving grants in 2018, basically on a two-year cycle, and ultimately have received to date about $1.8 million as part of the grant process. This particular grant that we're requesting the authorization to apply for is in the amount of approximately $300,000. And the purpose of this grant, it's dubbed again the Capstone Grant, and it's essentially the final grant opportunity that would be provided for the county in terms of safety and justice, and it builds upon the previous year's work. So the first two cycles were essentially implementation or, you know, innovation grant, and innovation grants to sort of build the processes and programs that we've put in place. The most recent round, 23 and 24, which we're currently in, is dubbed the Sustainability Grant, and that was essentially to give us an opportunity in coordination with our partners and other organizations to ensure that we're able to, you know, memorialize and put into place a lot of the processes that have heretofore been put in place throughout the grant period. So this particular grant application, I have before you right now the proposed budget. I do want to note that the budget on the memo is the correct one. On the application, the grant application request form that I circulated through the department liaison, auditor, and human resources is about $5,000 lower. We did identify an opportunity to add some additional funding to the community engagement, so that was an addition of about $5,000 from what's on the grant application form. So I am requesting the authority, the authority to submit an application in the amount of approximately $302,000 for the SJC Capstone Grant. We would find out according to the MacArthur Foundation sometime this fall whether or not we receive the funding, but I do want to note that the county was invited to apply for this particular grant. So we're hopeful that upon applying, we would receive the money. So we do have with us today representatives from USD, Erin and her team, South Dakota Urban Indian Health. I'm not sure if Tamian made it this morning from Think 3D.
Right there.
And certainly other, okay, great, and certainly other folks from the county who've had an impact on, you know, implementing a lot of the programs that we have associated with this particular grant. When we, if this is approved to apply and we're subsequently awarded the grant, it would mirror in large part what you've seen over the past several years. A lot of the programming would be contracted out through professional services contracts, or we would rely on USD for a lot of the administration, the project management, data management. But one thing that's different about this particular grant period is that the programming in terms of Urban Indian Health, Think 3D, the Leaders of Tomorrow Bridges program, we've invested a higher percentage of the grant request in that programming for individuals who need it. So with that, I would ask your approval to apply for the grant, and as I mentioned, we do have folks here if you have any specific questions about the actual grant.
Questions for Tom from the commission. Commissioner Bender?
So I would just say that I think I've been giving some updates as we've been going through this process a little bit, but I'm very supportive of this. I think that we've identified a way of continuing programs that have been proven to be impactful to citizens of Minnehaha County. The Leadership of Tomorrow program has been particularly impactful, and the data shows that the recidivism rate of those that are able to participate it is very impressive. I mean, it's a very low rate. And so I'm really excited about the opportunity to continue these programs that are proven to move the dial, sometimes not as, you know, measurably as you would like to be able to bring it forward, but, you know, even the community engagement events have been very well received by our community and our judicial system and all the people that participate from law enforcement and the others that are out there engaging with the community have found them to be very beneficial. And having a track record, people seem to be coming out more and more for those, so I really see those building a positive relationship between folks that are involved in the county providing services and the people in the community, so they have better understand what opportunities there are for them to get services that they may need. So with that, I just would make a motion, but would defer for other comments first and public comment.
Yep. Questions from the commission. Other comments?
Mr. Chair, I plan to be supportive as well. I'd love to hear from our friend Tamian to just maybe, could you give us the two-minute pitch on what the LOT Bridges program is? And I ask you to come up too, because the context for my colleagues is we've also got a budget meeting today, and there's this request, and then I know there's also in the outside agencies that we support, there's another request in there, and those are somewhat duplicative, but it also maybe prepares us for the conversation that this grant money isn't meant to be a forever thing. It's, and then some sustainability of this is going to fall to the county or other agencies, but maybe talk to us a little bit about the Leaders of Tomorrow and the Bridges program specifically, and we can go from there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you for having me. So yeah, so three years ago, we did with the first grant.
Tamian, can you just tell everybody who you are?
Oh, yes. Tamian Dyserd, I'm the CEO and co-founder of Think 3D. We launched our initial program, Leaders of Tomorrow, back in 2018, primarily building up leaders in our community. And three years ago, we got a grant from the MacArthur Foundation to expand into our Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Impacted program, and so that initial grant funding allowed us to do three cohorts for Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Impacted. We've been able to continue that work. We just graduated our seventh cohort of Leaders of Tomorrow, so some of the numbers that Commissioner Bender was talking about, Daniel Hagar has been tracking our recidivism through our first five cohorts of Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Impacted, 72% that have completed the program have not committed additional crimes. And so this was Leaders of Tomorrow Bridges is an expansion of getting into the county jails. And so the goal of this is a 16-week program that would be, wouldn't be linear, because again, obviously people that are going into the county jail, you don't know if they're going to be there for one week, two weeks, a few months, but it would allow them to have access to, they're called the seeds of success, and then knowing that we'll keep the external program, Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Impacted, going. We have two cohorts a year currently happening, as well as we also had gotten funding earlier this year to get inside the prison walls, where it's actually now inside the state prison as well with this program. And so our goal of this, of expanding this out is to get inside the county jails in collaboration with our fine law enforcement to continue to plant seeds, to give people pathways to success, and to build out peer support on the other side of folks being released from the county jail.
And then, Mr. Chair, just one follow-up question. So you're talking about 72% not committing a crime, so a 28% recidivism rate, how does that compare to the recidivism rate otherwise?
Yeah, so give you fair context, right, state usually only likes to count recidivism at a three-year rate, right? So statewide, we're in that 70-some percentile, so not great. So our numbers given through last year, we don't have full three-years of numbers, but again, Daniel gave us the, you know, he's tracking it for us all of our graduates, and so that 72% is of those who have graduated so far. And I would say that too is absent of having a robust peer support and reentry participation, and so we've been in conversations with collaborations with a few other individuals around that space, and so we expect that number to sustain, because we can continue not only to have this level of programming for individuals, but also build a community of support with peer mentors and those type of things on the other side of graduating the program as well as release.
Outstanding. Appreciate your work in the community, Tamian. That's all I had. Actually, if I could bring up some old friends from USD to maybe just, you guys doing some of the number crunching on this, if you could talk, we talked about recidivism rate, if there's anything, any other measures of success we expect out of this grant, anything else you could explain what we'll be looking for, what's the value to the community? Because obviously, I think the question is going to be asked after this money would run out, is do we continue to invest in those programs? So what are we, besides maybe recidivism rate and Tamian's group, what else will we be measuring?
Good morning, Erin Serska, USD Center for Rural Health Improvement Director. And what we track for this is really what MacArthur's grant is looking at is jail numbers. So monthly and quarterly, we look at jail numbers and arrests just globally we have for the last four or five years. So those are reported every month and every quarter to the foundation. The last few years as well, our team has conducted a robust evaluation plan, which is in your guys' file at the commission, if you would like to look at that regarding the link. So when it comes to recidivism, we really rely on the partners and part of Think 3D and their partnership, working with our state's attorney, looking at who has had that recidivism, and we'll continue to help them track that as needed. And I was just going to look at national recidivism rate. I didn't have time before you called me up, but that is something that we can work on in a briefing, to look out the national recidivism rate, but I liked how Tamian talked about the state recidivism rate. It's probably a little bit of a better comparison when we're talking about data.
Yes, and I guess my last commentary on it would just, trying to make sure, I could see, I just want some validity in the data. I could see some selection bias in someone that's willing to participate in a great program like Tamian puts on, maybe they're already, just in that willingness, there's a selection bias that they're already on a right path, they're willing to ask for help and things like that. So there just might be a lot of confounding variables or different analysis that I'd be interested in just as we go forward, just diving deep into the data and thinking about some of those things. But any response to that's welcome.
Yeah, I would say like, there's a, if you want to dig into recidivism, there's about as many different, a moisted track that and operational definitions as there probably is that folks that work in here from the justice system. So what I think it's important for our programs in the Minnehaha County and state area that we have a consistent operationalization, understanding, you know, what our algorithm and what our methodology is going to be for measuring that, and just making sure that it's consistent throughout the year, so we're comparing it as we go forward. As far as the biases go for measuring, again, when you look at criminal justice-based programming, actually, if you look at research, if you offer programs that they self-select into, you do have a better outcome, because there's some agency in participation in these different programs. If you look at probation and parole programming, best practices, positive-based behavior programs like this are very, very, very successful, again, focusing on the strength-based, moving those up. So it's no surprise that, to your point, that they're self-selecting into it, and then they're going to do better in the content and the curriculum, and really the objective of Leaders of Tomorrow is really strength-based, and to create folks that not just feel better about themselves, but then are able to give back to the community. And Tamian, there's links to videos of the success of those that have completed and have moved up like three or four places in their jobs, in addition to, you know, not being rearrested. So we can definitely dig into that, and Tamian is working with our state's attorney's office for that, but I love looking into that more, so if any more support, we could definitely do that.
Awesome. Appreciate the dialogue. Thank you.
I guess my read on this is the analogy, an alcoholic or a drug addict that voluntarily enters treatment versus one that's told they have to is probably going to be more successful
Right.
in the end, but it's important that we offer that help, because if it's not there, and in two years, this grant goes away, and we have to decide, do we want to continue to fund it? So that's where that data is important.
And I do, we haven't talked much about South Dakota Urban Indian Health WOCA program. If you look at what this grant's done over the last eight to nine years, it started out giving the data, like a huge baseline and conceptual plan to get the link up and going and funded without grant funding, all the way to, you'll hear from pre-trial, it helped start pre-trial here, and as you look at to the different community-based and focusing on community-based engagement opportunities or programming, it really, this grant has really helped support a continuum. So South Dakota Urban Indian Health WOCA program, which is also now assisted by funding by the city, is doing kind of that outreach at the very beginning level, like pre-arrest, right, out there in the streets, walking, and they, we have a representative here, I know that she has some numbers, if you would like to hear from them, but I just want to recognize on record the continuum of things this grant has supported over the numerous years, and given the opportunity to develop a robust continuum of opportunities for, you know, our folks of Minnehaha County.
Other commission questions or comments? Commissioner Leinberg?
I would just like to echo Commissioner Bender's comments about the grant in general, and then also as a recent participant and graduate of the Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Impacted group, I can really speak to the transformative impact that I was able to see in the other participants in my cohort, which it was a really impactful time. It was very well done and very well received. And then I just also wanted to mention, if you want to see the grant in action, the next community engagement event, I believe, is coming up later this month at the Granite Valley Park, and I know they are always looking for volunteers to help, but we're also welcome to stop in and visit and interact with families too.
Yes. For anybody that's even listening, the commission highly recommend, there's four park events with very targeted parks across our city, and there, last year was close to 600 individuals that came from each neighborhood to these different events. There's a lot of different vendor booths, jumpy castles, you know, a DJ, folks from the arts community volunteering some of their time. They've done t-shirts and hats, and it's just a great, great, great opportunity to interact with the citizens of the county in a very informal and really fun fashion. There's hot dogs and watermelon. Watermelon's a big hit, so.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission action.
I'll second Commissioner Bender's motion.
I'll make a motion?
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to submit an application for the fiscal year 2024 SCAP grant. Captain Bosman, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. This morning, first request I have in front of you is an authorization for us to apply for, we call it the SCAP grant, which is short for the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. It is a federal grant that is authorized to jurisdictions that house inmates that potentially have a non-US citizen basis, and we use a lot of data-driven factors to determine based on the salaries of our staff, the number of individuals that we've housed, the length that they've been housed, what kind of crimes they're in for. The feds have this whole big formula that they come together, and they can say, we'll provide some assistance back to those jurisdictions that house those individuals that can be repurposed into correctional purposes. So that comes up with the SCAP grant. This is an annual grant that we've had the pleasure of applying for over several years now. Wards range anywhere from $33,000 to $53,000, just kind of depending on the number of inmates, the amount of salaries of our staff, and so with your authorization, we'd like to apply for the federal fiscal year 24 SCAP program.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Leinberg?
Thank you. I was just curious, do you know what we spent the, I think it was $53,000 on in 2023? From what I understood, it was to be used for equipment purchases. Is that right?
Yep, it is used for correctional purposes. Ward Mattson might remind me of transport vehicles. We've used it, I think, did we use it for body scanner? Was it with the 24.7 expansion? Did we use some SCAP money for that too? Maybe not in that, but yeah, but the body scanner was a big cost, and then transport vehicle is the most recent one.
Thank you.
All righty. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission action.
Would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to reclassify one full-time employee position within the sheriff's office Emergency Management Division. You're still up, Captain.
I am, yes. Thank you for the opportunity to listen to this request here. We have, right now at the Emergency Management Division, which falls under the sheriff's office, we have two full-time positions, the Director of Emergency Management, Jason Gierman, and the Assistant Director, Doug Blumker. Mr. Blumker is retiring this week after his long-term with us at the Emergency Management, and so we're grateful for his years of service out there with emergency management duties, police reserves. The individual has done a lot to expand that program out there, so we're thankful to him for that. At this time though, is when some, an opportunity comes to relook at a position and the duties that the individual possesses and could possess. In conjunction with the cooperative efforts with the sheriff's office, we've looked at his position to reclassify it into a deputy sheriff-sergeant position. That would still be assigned to the roles of the emergency management to make sure that we comply with the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management regulations, because there is some funding reimbursement from South Dakota OEM. So we'd make sure that the deputy sheriff-sergeant would fulfill those duties, but it also would tie that division more closely with our sheriff's office, with training, some equipment oversight, reporting requirements to the state for all of our deputy sheriffs, and kind of just overall tie the agency, that division closer to our sheriff's office. They are both at a pay grade 20, so there is not a different classification for the pay grade. The individual would still, you know, we have an internal hiring process that we already have established. We have sergeant eligibility list that we could use at this time, and so it was one of those things that we were looking for, the opportunity to grow this relationship with that division out there.
Questions for the captain?
I've got a question, Mr. Chair. I'll be supportive of this, Captain, but I think it's important to emphasize to the community that emergency management is not just law enforcement, and could you, you or I think Jason, I thought I saw Jason Gierman's here today. Yeah, if either of you could kind of just communicate the, I know you're collaborating with, you know, rural fire, city fire, EMS services, but just don't want to get the community to get the wrong impression that we're, yes, emergency management falls under the sheriff's office, but it's still a collaborative approach, and in any emergency response, it's going to be a multidisciplinary team that responds to different things. So if you can just kind of speak to that level of collaboration outside of the sheriff's office.
Yes, exactly. And so he's exactly right. We attend fire chiefs meetings, ambulance meetings, police reserves functions, and so a lot of times when we have a large-scale event, you have multiple first responder agencies there. You have fire, EMS, and law enforcement. So having somebody that's in the emergency management division that is connected so closely with law enforcement to the fire chiefs is going to be a perfect liaison for that event like that. And so we do a lot of different activities with the Emergency Operations Center. emergency operations center. Just having that dual role, that dual knowledge of that law enforcement and EM for that one new position like this is going to go way far.
So this is a deputy sheriff. Is he going to be reporting to Jason or to, I mean, when you look at the hierarchy of law enforcement, how does this org chart kind of look?
Sure. So the way that it would be built is that Jason Gierman is still the director of emergency management. This deputy sheriff would fall under Jason, which Jason falls under my purview as a captain. So there is some oversight there. That's the tie of the hierarchy. So I oversee Jason, Jason would oversee this EM sergeant.
Commissioner Bender?
So, I mean, other than then change the classification and the ability to be a little bit more integrated, the day-to-day responsibilities of this position won't change dramatically. Is that fair?
That's correct. He's still going to complete all the same functions and duties that Doug Blumker completed. There's just going to be some more integration with attending and being a part of our law enforcement training, which is also the same training that the police reserves do. It's just we're doing it separate right now. Doug's doing his training for the police reserves, the sheriff's office is doing their training. So why are we doing the same training just on different sites with different instructors when we can be tied together with this one?
I guess my only additional comment is congratulations to Doug. I know we were hoping to hang on to him for a little while longer. He's been a great county employee and I personally wish him well. So congratulations to him.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this? All right. Turn it back to the commission for action.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider a motion to declare two emergency managed vehicles as surplus for donation to the Sioux Empire Fair. Speaking of Mr. Gierman, good morning, sir.
Hi. Jason Gierman, director of emergency management. Looking to get rid of a couple vehicles, 2004 Chevy Suburban and a 98 Ford F-450 for surplus and then donation to the fairgrounds. They reached out to me as they drove by my lot and saw the vehicle sitting there and thought it would be a really good fit for what they need them for. And from what Mr. Wick described, I think they would be. Looking for a motion to declare the listed vehicles as surplus for donation to the Sioux Empire Fair.
All right. Questions from the commission? I didn't look. What are these, Jason?
One's a 1998 Ford F-450 chassis that I put a, I saved the box from, the rescue box from that and replaced it with the F-550 chassis. And they want to use this for a water truck. Motor's in good shape, but the transmission is not. So the value on that is very minimal. And that's something that, that's originally what they wanted only. And then they saw the Suburban was sitting out there. And that Suburban, we don't really allow going on any emergency calls or higher speeds because there's some issues with the rear end. And to replace that, the cost probably isn't going to match what the vehicle's worth. So they can use it out there for, you know, transporting people back and forth, you know, moving trailers. It's a 2,500, three-quarter ton, so.
Good. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission action?
I'll make approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Today's our law enforcement day, obviously. Briefing on the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office pretrial program. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Michelle Boyd, Programs and Services Manager at the sheriff's office. This morning, you've been hearing a lot about SJC. And as Erin mentioned, the pretrial program is one of those that was funded under the SJC money. And now the county is funding it. We're here today to give you a brief update on how pretrial's going. You may recall, we changed vendors a couple of years ago. So we've been working through that process of getting things kind of where we want to have them so we can report out some of the successes that we're having. I've brought today Jasmine Thielen, immediately supervises the pretrial services. And then Tony Helen will give you a brief overview here quickly. As you know, the majority of defendants placed on pretrial monitoring have a history of fail to appear. And they're failing to appear for court and other meetings that they should be going to, such as their attorneys. And they also have a number of pending criminal cases. So Tony has taken upon himself to compile some data for pretrial to show us that there's about a 65% reduction rate in the fail to appear since they started keeping this data. So as such, we've also seen a reduction in the average daily jail population, which can't, of course, be contributed solely to pretrial, but we know in part it has something to do with that. And then as you hear these other things like LOT, we have some case processing changes that were made. There were some pretty significant bond changes that were made through COVID. We have the EM program, we have the 24/7 program. So I think the county has been doing a really good job over these last five years of trying to fill in some of those gaps where maybe we can lift people up before they get too far into their criminal history. Just some quick stats, I looked of June of, for the last three years. So June of 2022, our Minnehaha County inmate population was 522. In June of 23, it was 461. And then just June of this year, we're at 284. So I think all of these things that we're kind of working on out in the community and our community partners are helping us is having somewhat of an impact on that. And then, of course, the cost to the taxpayers. So with that, I'll let Tony come up and give you a brief update on that.
Morning, commissioners. Anthony Helen with Minnehaha County Pretrial Services. I'm very happy to be here. I just want to give you a brief overview and a small update on those figures that Michelle had spoken about. So pretrial services consists of three full-time staff. We're within the sheriff's department, housed in the jail. We have two main functions, one being the creation and submission of a public safety assessment. We create those at the beginning of each day for everybody that's been arrested that qualifies for one. To date, we've created some 40,000 PSAs that have been submitted to the courts for an individual's initial appearance to be used in determination of bond considerations. The second main function is a pretrial monitoring program. And this comes to us as a condition of bond for an individual. So a judicial officer will deem it necessary based on an individual's criminal history or amount of pending cases, that extra support is necessary to make sure and ensure they make it back to court or get a handle on their pending cases. And so they're assigned to us through that bond condition. To date, since pretrial monitoring has began, we've monitored some 2,000 individuals. And I think that number, we just surpassed 2,000 this year. We have a current caseload of about 250 people for the three pretrial staff. And so we monitor them very closely. There are two main goals that pretrial has, and that's the reduction of failure to appear rates for the individuals that we monitor. And then also the providing the objective, accurate information to the judges and attorneys to be used in those bond considerations. So those are the two main goals that pretrial tries to attain. As far as monitoring goes, some 80% of the individuals that we have monitored historically and are currently monitoring are in that higher risk rate for failure to appear or to pick up new charges. And so a PSA may score something on a factor of one through six, six being the highest predictive rate for failure to appear, to pick up new charges. And some 80% of the individuals we supervise are in that 6/6 range for failure to appear and pick up new charges, or 5/6 in there. Basically, they need that extra support. And so we are supervising the individuals that do need the extra supervision or monitoring, I should say, to make it back to court and reduce those failures to appear. Over the past few months, the three pretrial staff have really hit hard, how do we gauge our performance metrics? What metrics do we use to talk about our successes? So we've gone through a number of pieces of data, what's worthwhile, what's not worthwhile. And one piece that's floated to the top is we looked at those individuals that were assigned to pretrial in the year 2022 and 2023. And so a judicial officer has a condition of bond that you should be monitored by pretrial. They're required to do so. They've checked in. Some 800 individuals during those two years of 2022 and 2023 were enrolled in pretrial services. We took at those, we took a look at those specific 800 individuals, how many failures to appear did they have in the previous two years? So 2020 and 2021. And we saw a reduction of 65% in the failure to appear rate, 2021, 2022 versus 2022, 2023, when they were enrolled in pretrial services. So we're looking at a smaller population within the county, those that are specifically monitored by pretrial to see how we're doing in reducing that failure to appear. And we're very happy to announce that that figure is, was surprising to us. We weren't sure that we were having that kind of impact. We went back and double-checked those figures, but we're very pleased to share that information with you today. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question? Can you just describe for us, what are the knock-on effects of a failure to appear? Obviously, that's costly to the system in some way, but I'm having trouble, maybe not quantifying it in real dollar terms, but what happens just practically speaking? If I fail to appear, that wastes a judge and attorney's time and things like that. But then what comes downhill from that?
Well, they would come in on a new warrant, so they run the risk of being arrested. If an individual is monitored by pretrial and we see that they have a failure to appear, we'll contact them right away. It may be eligible for the walk-in warrant program. They can take care of it without actually being housed in jail. You know, that makes a lot of people nervous to show up and say, hey, I have a warrant. So unfortunately, more often than not, we see individuals, you know, we let them know they have a warrant, but it's basically arrestable offense. And they'll come back and be housed in jail. Depending on when they come in, they may have to sit one, two, maybe three days over the weekend before seeing a judicial officer. It'll come in with a bond. So they either have to post a significant monetary amount to be released, see the judge possibly get that reduced. And then, you know, they'll have to have their cases rescheduled possibly because they failed to appear. So then the pending cases then compound down, down the way. So there's a lot of contributing factors to lengthening a person's pending cases.
Other questions or comments? Public comment on this agenda item? All right. This is a briefing, so there is no action. So thank you for everything you do. Moving on then to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a renewal agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for pretrial services. Welcome back. And I just noticed, Michelle, five years in your current position as program and service manager?
Yes.
How is that possible?
Okay. So yes, Michelle Boyd, again, with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. The work that pretrial services does is not only for Minnehaha County, but it's also for Lincoln County. We've been doing that since December of 2018. And so I'm here today to ask you to sign renewal of that contract with Lincoln County. They pay us $17,500 per year for the next two years, which will go through December 31st of 2026. And since 2023, pretrial has completed 765 PSAs specifically for Lincoln County. So we're assisting them in the same type of work Tony just talked about. One thing I will mention is Judge Howman was going to be here today, but she's not available. But she just wanted to let you know that the courts are very appreciative of the work that pretrial's doing because the judges find it very beneficial to have that upfront information when they're making bond decisions, when they're deciding on release decisions. And then Commissioner Kipli, I like to compare kind of what they're doing to, they help to manage people and their lives and some of their appointments they're getting to. I refer to it like when I get a text message about my dental appointment that I maybe wasn't thinking about tomorrow, you know, just to kind of help people keep on track and keep, keep those things at the front of their mind. Because as we know, especially people who are struggling with addiction or other issues, that's not always on the forefront of their, of their minds. So we appreciate the work that they're doing. So I'm just asking for approval first to sign that contract. Lincoln County signed it on May 28th in their, in their, what am I trying to say, counties? Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Bender?
More of a comment than a question. But I mean, I think this, this contract is one, is the kind of collaboration that taxpayers really are always looking for. I really appreciate your staff being willing to provide these services. You know, it's complicated because the way our court systems are organized. Court cases frequently involve people that have committed crimes, both in Lincoln County and in Minnehaha County, because the Second Judicial Circuit covers both of them. And some of the, it's data that you provided shows how many of the cases that you provide pretrial for are complicated in the sense that they have crimes in both counties. So I think this is a great, you know, I would always argue that Lincoln County is the benefactor or is the recipient of our, being the benefactor here. But I mean, I think you have tried to parcel out the cost to represent, you know, what they're truly, truly their responsibility. And so I think this is a great idea and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Mr. Chair, just one clarifying question, because I think we've got a couple of things going on here. There's public safety assessments. Those are done in each morning. It was the thing we talked about overnight, there's X number of arrests, and those might be Lincoln County or Minnehaha County arrests. And so I'm reading this, right, that in 2023, we completed 765 of those assessments for Lincoln County, but not all of those individuals go on to actually be assigned to pretrial services. So there's some global, because I thought I heard the number for Minnehaha County, it's into like the tens of thousands, like, so obviously, we're the bigger recipient and Lincoln County is, is, is receiving some help from this as well. But this is still primarily a Minnehaha County element. And then just as Commissioner Bender said, I think the taxpayers expect us to find some efficiencies and work with our friends in Lincoln County. But just wanted to clarify that, that there's, the public safety assessments are kind of the more global assessment for almost anybody that comes through the door. And then pretrial services are only assigned as appropriate from there. And that's a fraction. And I'm getting a head nod in the audience too. So I think I'm on track of understanding this.
Yep. So they apply, or they will submit those assessments for the judge. And then the judges in Lincoln County and Minnehaha County identify who they want to place on pretrial. So this morning, one of the pretrial staff is working on those PSAs and the other one is sitting in court, listening to see who is placed on pretrial so that we can get them signed up before they get released in the community. So we have accurate information for contacting them.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Any public comment? So I do need a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. I'm going to call out one other person. It's Warden Mattson's 20th anniversary this year too. So, Mike, thank you for your 20 years. All right. Consider a motion to authorize the chair.
Commissioner, we also have someone who's been in the program for 31 years, if you look at the thank you notes. So, Michelle, thank you for 31 years. Between the two of you, you make up the police department.
All right. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for the county Highway 151 and Western Avenue Traffic Study. I believe that is in Hartford.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioner Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is a follow-up to the joint powers agreement with the city of Hartford that you approved at your last meeting on May 28th. The city of Hartford and Minnehaha County have chosen JEO Engineering to complete this corridor study, which will be predominantly funded by the Sioux Falls MPO. We're looking for permission to enter into a contract with JEO.
Questions for Steve? One just comes to mind, Steve, any idea, has Hartford been in any discussion about annexing that land to the west of that highway or?
Mr. Chair, no. We ask about that recent, quite often because we own the west half, they own the east half.
Yeah.
And we'd like to just turn it over. And maybe that's some way we can figure out an avenue to do that upon completion of this corridor study.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I guess maybe more of a comment or question for Steve. But there's a lot going on there because we've got the, and talk about different jurisdictions being involved because we've got, the federal government would be that, that interstate interchange is right there. And then we've got some municipal, some county. Anyway, I just think, I think it was, the mayor of Hartford was at downtown Rotary yesterday, kind of extolling the virtues of economic development in Hartford. And I think they expect a lot of growth on that portion of town. And I guess this will help them with that economic development to know what the current traffic study is. And if they get some more industrial park on the north end of that, what, what, how traffic would change? Is that going to be one, is that in scope to this traffic study of what future growth?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kipli, that is one of the central reasons we're doing this corridor study is the continued growth, the increase in both residential and commercial properties, plus the expansion of their and commercial properties, plus the expansion of their ballpark facilities to the north of Highway 38. There was a federal study of the interchange. That interchange scheduled to be replaced in the next couple of years. But the state DOT administers those in partnership with federal highway. And the state is also doing a corridor study on Highway 38 from Humboldt all the way into Marion Road that the county is a part of also. And they're also, we're going to be using some of the data, sharing data between those two corridor studies.
All right. If no other commission questions or comments, look for public comment. Seeing none, I'll turn it to the commission for a motion.
And to approve? Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Consider a motion to declare certain highway department equipment as surplus and authorize the sale of those units to Union County.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. About a month ago, Union County was out at our facility for a meeting during a tour. Their fleet supervisor inquired about our vehicle lifts that we'd used in our old facility. We purchased new heavier-duty ones for our new facility. After talking with staff, we have not used those old lifts since we moved in the building and have no plans at this point to use it. So they also inquired about the sweeper that we use in the shop that is now not being used because we have a new tenant scrubber sweeper. With conversations with their highway department, with our state's attorney, and with Union County Commission, we're asking your permission to surplus those two units in order to sell them to Union County.
Questions from the commission? Public comment? Turn it back to the commission for action.
Would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. And last highway department action. Consider a motion to authorize the highway department to purchase a hydraulic dump body and toolbox for a new Ford F-550 chassis through Sourcewell Contract 080818.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This completes a vehicle that you authorized back last November for the purchase of the chassis. We anticipate taking delivery of the chassis here in the next couple of months. This would be to do the remaining build for that unit.
Questions for Steve? Public comment? All right. Turn it back to the commission.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. That concludes our regular agenda. We are now at the opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to address the commission about a non-agenda item, we welcome your input at this time. All right. Move on to commission liaison reports. Mr. Blainberg.
I just have a few comments about things that maybe don't come to front of mind when we think about county operations. The museum board meeting last week received an update on the clock tower, which we have been struggling with finding, not struggling, but working to find someone to repair. The mechanism is...
Struggling is probably appropriate.
Yeah. It's an old piece of equipment. And at several points, or at a certain point, we were struggling with a very large price tag based on estimates from expert known facts of county government.
All righty. Anything else? Any other liaison reports, Commissioner Kipley?
Give it just a, a quick one. Got a CCOG board meeting tomorrow and then kind of related to equalization. But as we're thinking about property taxes and budgets, just a reminder that there is a legislative summer study. And so that first meeting of that group is on Monday. And our Minnehaw County Equalization Officer isn't on the agenda, but I think two of his, our sister counties, their equalization officer, I think the legislative study is just at that, you know, receiving information and learning about the property tax formula, how assessed values are calculated. So I don't expect a lot of action to come out of Monday's meeting, but a lot of information getting thrown at our legislative friends. And I just think that's what, something as we go through our own budget season, we'll want to keep our eye on the legislature's activities as to any potential changes or creative opportunities for how we would calculate property taxes in the future. So just a note on that.
I'm sure Meredith is quickly becoming an expert. Yeah. All right. No other liaison reports? Is, do we have any non-action commission discussion? Commissioner Benega.
Yeah, I've had a few contacts and people asking about the post-election process and how that's conducted and how it's going to be audited and all those questions. So I think we need to have not only a conversation from the auditor's office about when and where this election's going to be held and how we're going to inform the public on what that process is about, how the members are chosen. Is there requirements for that group? And are there party requirements for each of those pieces? And I also have to have a clarification on what we're paying those individuals. So we have some expectation of what the cost is. I think we also need to know what conditions could happen for a post-election audit after the audit is complete. And then we also, do we get any of that cost reimbursed from the Secretary of State? That's a question I think there's some challenges with or some different opinions. And what do we do with the results of the post-election audit? So I think we'd like to have some feedback about that whole process.
So next Tuesday, a briefing from the auditor is what you're?
I think so, because we're assuming at this point, and I was out of town yesterday for most of the weekend, but I think the audit is going to be conducted somewhere around the 25th. And I think the results are due the next day. So that's a huge process in a short period of time. And there's obviously interest in people about what that amounts to.
I've had questions myself, so I think that's a reasonable ask. So, okay. Any other, anybody want to comment on that request?
I would just say that yesterday, some of those same questions were raised and, but there wasn't a, I think that having an opportunity to have all of us here, since there was only two of the sitting commissioners here yesterday at the canvassing board, I think it's a great opportunity to have the issues come back forward and, and give the auditor a little bit of time this week to come up with a, you know, a more solid plan. She's obviously been pretty busy the last few weeks. I think that's a great idea.
All right. So we have a request for that for next week. Any other non-action commission discussion? All righty, then. I believe we do have time for executive session immediately following this. So I'm going to look for a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Code of Fight Law, 125, 213, 4 and 6.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We will be entering executive session in just a short time.